Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending our November 11th, 2024 City of Shore Acres City Council. And for any veteran that we have in the audience tonight, thank you for your service. We appreciate it. So, would you please call roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Jennings, Mayor Jerome.
Present.
Alderman.
Present.
Felicia, older man West, older man Hoskins, and older man West. And older man Grayson. Get in my, out of chair, it always gets me like that.
We do have a quorum. If you'd please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
That takes us to 3.0. And the first thing is 3.1. And we are very fortunate to have a new young officer working for the city of Shore Acres. His name is Jonathan Santana. He has gone through the academy, passed T close, was with LaPorte PD, and decided he liked our uniform better, so he came over to Shore Acres. And Jonathan, at this time, I'm going to swear you in, sir. You raise your right hand, sir. I, Jonathan Santana.
I, Jonathan Santana.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of police officer.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of police officer.
For the city of Shore Acres and will do the best of my ability.
For the city of Shore Acres, I will do my best of my ability.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
To protect, preserve, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
I furthermore solemnly swear.
I furthermore solemnly swear.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Nor indirectly been paid.
Nor indirectly been paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Or promised to pay.
Or promised to pay.
Contribute.
Contribute.
Nor promised to contribute to any money.
Nor promised to contribute any money.
Or valuable thing.
Or valuable thing.
As a reward.
As a reward.
For my appointment.
For my appointment.
To which I have been named.
To which I have been named.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, officer.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard.
Y'all should go take a picture by the flags for David. No, maybe later?
All right. You know, this is just going to be a great night for our little city. We have a young man in the audience. Jacob, please stand. And if you don't mind, Jacob, stand over by the flag.
By the way, Jacob thought we were coming to complain about a water bill?
Nice.
Tonight, this proclamation is about you. It's about the attitude that you had, the fact that you had perseverance to be on Shore Acres Boulevard, sell lemonade to help people that had been through a hurricane, collected $1,325, and then donated it to the citizens of North Carolina and Tennessee. And here's your proclamation. Where it has been brought to the attention of the city of Shore Acres that Jacob Kenderski, a resident of this city, raised funds for the residents of North Carolina and Tennessee that were affected by Hurricane Helen. And whereas Jacob set up a lemonade stand on Shore Acres Boulevard and raised $1,325. And whereas Jacob has exemplified the spirit of this community that embodies Shore Acres. Therefore, I, Jerome McCowen, Mayor Pro team of the city of Shore Acres, Texas, on this 11th day of November, 2024, do hereby, on behalf of the citizens of Shore Acres, Texas, extends congratulations and best wishes to you for your standing exemplary community involvement. Thank you, young man. And now we have the pleasure of having Mr. Chad Burke of the Economic Alliance Port of Houston to be with us tonight.
Congratulations, by the way. Yeah, good job.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's tough to follow, but what a good young man. It is a pleasure to come and stand in front of y'all each year and give you an annual update of all the good things going on in the port region and just kind of see where we are and what's going on and where we're headed. The mission is still the same, is to grow the economy. And we do that through economic development work, trying to add capital investment to the region. And then we support that with all the different initiatives, whether it be public policy, infrastructure work, workforce development, quality of life. And then we take a lot of the information that we have from our members and turn it back around into really events, thought leadership, but events to kind of push that information out. Footprint has not changed. I think we probably had already added Mont Belvieu last time we were here, but we've got 13 cities now reaching from Mont Belvieu all the way down to Seabrook and over to Pearland, kind of that whole southeast quadrant of Harris County. Economic development, this is just the almost 15, 16-year report card now, 82 wins, $18 billion. This region continues to really benefit from the shale revolution, natural gas and oil and gas in Texas and North Dakota. In 2024, we worked on two projects that were announced as wins for the region. QYK Brands is building a manufacturing plant up on the north side of the Ship Channel, about $400 million in capital investment. And then we also helped, again, on the north side with Jaceno City. Faust Distributing is going to do about a $24 million expansion there. So, I didn't, we didn't get any promise for cases of beer or anything with that. It was just all regular help. But it was good for Jaceno City, created some good jobs there. Our current project pipeline is really pretty full. 26 projects, about $7.6 billion in capital investment. We've been averaging about $1.5 billion in, I'll go back a couple of slides. We've been averaging about $1.5 billion in capital investment on about three or four projects each year. You'll see this year was actually down a little bit. And almost every four years, it's similar, that on election years, the large cap projects tend to slow down. And then, once the election is passed, then you'll begin to see more investment come out. So, everybody from our plant managers to investment people are telling us that '25 and '26 should be good growth years moving forward. So, hopefully, this will be back up near a billion dollars next year. Public policy work continues in Washington DC and in Austin. We're prepping, this was our trip to DC this last year. We had 52 members go with us, fantastic day. I think we had four students from San Jac with us. Just a really, really good two days of meetings, 46 meetings across two days. And you can see the initiatives or the priorities that our policy committee came up with. It's the things that you would expect us to be working on. It's Ship Channel improvements, regulatory environment, it's community college workforce development support, and then it's coastal barrier, kind of, again, infrastructure. And we're doing the same thing right now as we get ready for Austin. On December 11th, at the San Jaceno Monument, we're hosting the legislative kickoff event. It's about, it's 3:00 to 5:00. And we've got, I think, six of our state representatives and one of the two senators are going to be there. So, it would be a good discussion to kind of hear what they're thinking headed into it. And then we will deliver them our priorities at that as we head into the session. Transportation and infrastructure, obviously a big part. Obviously a big part of what's going on. You can see some of the projects that we've been working on. You can see, I highlighted several of the projects that we've had direct hands on over the last, really, decade, almost decade and a half now. Everything from beginning with the South Kemos Seabrook section of 146, the current section of 146, I call it the LaPorte section, under construction now. We did finally get funding for all eight of the direct connectors. The first five are supposed to begin before the end of this year. I'm going to check in with whoever our new district director is going to be now that Eliza is retired, but they promised that they were going to start before the end of the year. And then '25, they're going to start the other three. '25, we got commitment to get overlay, and that starts probably in first quarter of next year. And then the big project is the Ship Channel Bridge, the redevelopment of '25, which is going to look something like this. They're going to elevate some lanes down '25, and then they're going to redevelop, they're going to rebuild the Ship Channel 16 Bridge, the Sherman Bridge. So, this project is approved by TechDOT. It is not in the RTP yet, the Regional Transportation Plan. I will be sending out letters to all of our 13 cities and our state reps and our US and federal reps and senators in trying to just generate as much support as we can to TechDOT to get that put in. It's actually a little bit more difficult to get it in the transportation planning, the long-term planning, transportation plan than it is to actually get it funded. I think we'll have the funds to build it, but we have to, it has to be put in the plan first so that then it's designated, a project that they're going to do, then they can put money towards it. So, support letters from cities like Shore Acres and LaPorte and all of our cities around here are going to be important. This is just kind of a recap. We get the overlay next year, the direct connectors at Beltway 8 begin here almost anytime, and then the Ship Channel Bridge. They're going to start the environmental studies now, but it's still probably a 10- or 15-year project before they replace that. But they're headed in the right direction now. Workforce development, Patty Bell has been our workforce development director for about seven years, almost eight years now. And she does a fantastic job, talking to about 5,000 students a year. And she's on track to do that again this year. She just does a wonderful job of marketing the careers that we have here to the high school students as they're leaving high school and trying to get into the workforce. And we stay in close contact with our industry partners to make sure that those are the jobs that we're needing to fill. And we tell those kids, here are the pathways to get into those jobs. And then quality of life, we do have matching grants from the funds within our historic district. And again, we continue to push those out to almost all of our cities. And we're always welcome, any kind of project that y'all might have, we're always interested in helping support that. And then events, again, we have anywhere from 12 different events a year. The largest one being our Gulf Coast Industry Forum was a great event again this year. I think we had somewhere north of 800 people there in that one-day conference and just fantastic conversation all day long about what is happening in this region, what's happening with the Port of Houston, what's happening with the industry, you know, how we can continue to grow and be successful in this region. So, it's a great day to get together with everybody and really kind of hear what's going on and what's moving forward. And I promise to keep it short, so I will open it up to any questions that you've got. But, you know, we love having Shore Acres as one of our 13 cities that we represent. It's always good to be able to work with you. Yes, sir?
The last time we had talked, when you gave the presentation before, we talked about, you know, the increased traffic of the trucks and so forth, and how they pour up the railroad tracks on Bay Area over there as well, you know, or at Choke Road there. And have you ever been down here when the trucks were lined all the way back up to '25?
I have been, I have been, yeah.
You can get out on Choke, from Choke Road on to 146, but you take your life in your hands if you try to get over in one more lane. It would, you know, if, when you talk to TechDOT, one of the things we need to do is to finish the service road going all the way down so that, you know, you could go down Choke Road, take a left instead of going up on 146 where all the trucks are. You could go on down and then get up on 146 farther down. But that service road has never been, there's no service road.
That's where it stopped.
On the west side.
On the west side, south of Choke.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay.
There's nothing there. And you, you know, once you're on Choke Road there, you either got to go over to Bay Area and go up there. Because you can't get up there, well, you can get up there with the trucks, but you just got to wait till they pull off and get in the, get up there.
I know that they're, and that's north of the Red Bluff intersection, right? Isn't Red Bluff the next one down?
Yes.
They, I'll have to ask them about that because they were doing some work on old 146 at Red Bluff as a change order to that, to that section of 146 there. And maybe, I'm not sure what they have planned for that west side of 146, but I can put an inquiry in there and see what they have going on.
And probably the big problem is they got to put a bridge in or extend that bridge to get a road in down that way.
That covers, that crosses over that section of what, Taylor Lake or whatever it's called as it flows out into this side, yeah. Okay, I know where you're talking about now, so.
But it would sure help, you know.
To get people away from the trucks when it's backed up like that.
Same thing, you know, going the other way, coming down from Warden Lane there, there's, you know, you have to get up on 146 with the trucks, because you can't get down the service road back. Same way.
Yeah.
That's two places right there that's hazardous.
I'll ask, I'll ask. They're kind of in an interim spot right now since Eliza retired, Eliza Paul retired. But I know who's kind of sitting in that seat right now, so we can put a question in, see if they've got any plans at all, and then begin to kind of push them in that direction.
Ask them, because they're widening the bridges now in those two areas.
Yeah. Okay, good, good. Anything else? Any other question?
Anything else?
That's good, that's all we've got.
Thank you, sir, very much for giving the presentation.
I appreciate it. Y'all have a great evening.
Good luck in your endgame.
Thank you.
Bye, Ms. Karen.
Bye-bye. Thank y'all.
4.0, 4.1, the opportunity for members of council to share with anything that you have. Alderman Bell.
I can't figure anything, Jerome.
Alderman Grayson.
Have we had any comments back? You know, send a note about the hole down there, circle part that's about to fall over? Is anything?
I went back and looked at it again this morning. I mean, they've been notified, just like this little hanging wire right here.
Yeah, I've seen that.
We let them know and let them know, but I'll still down this morning.
That one's low enough that we have a big truck go through there.
They're well aware, that's Comcast, or non Comcast, whatever they call them.
Well, this is, that's the lower one here.
Yes, that's Center Point.
Center Point? Okay, that's all I have.
Alderwoman Remus.
Are we talking about the Taylor now? Okay, so the city of Shore Acres is hosting a teddy bear slash toy drive. And you can donate your toys upstairs at City Hall, and we're taking donations until November 30th.
Toys.
Toys, that means you have to go shopping. I'm sorry to let you down.
Maybe that's, I'll stay out of the stores this year.
You can probably set up an arrangement with Elaine, and she could probably do something.
And I'm going to bring up two items. Number one is, this past weekend, we had our barbecue cook-off in the big city of Shore Acres. We had nine teams to participate. The barbecue was outstanding, probably some of the best ribs I've ever eaten. So, they really did an outstanding job. Second thing that I'd like to mention is, on December the 2nd, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM here at City Hall, we are going to have our first annual Christmas celebration with hot chocolate, treats, pictures with Santa's, tree lighting, and decorations to make the season more magical than it already is. So, that's all that we have. Any other council person have anything else? Okay. Going to 5.1, public comments. This is the opportunity for the public to address this city council. Time is limited to five minutes per speaker. Comments are to be directed to the city council, and dialogue with the audience is not permitted at all. Council members are prohibited by law from discussing or deliberating items not specifically identified on this agenda. Does anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to say tonight? Yes, ma'am, if you'll please stand and give your address.
My name's Mary Becker. I live at 202 Fairfield. And what I would like to say, a couple of comments about communication with the city. I want to tell you, thank you very much for posting more information on the city signs about when the city council meetings are and what date and what time. I think that that's really important to get participation from the citizens here. I would like to see it on more signs because we've got the one in the front, the electronic sign, and then we've got half of one side, you know, this side of the city council, City Hall sign, and then the other side. And I would like to see on important events like city council meetings that it be posted on both sides. Some people just go down Shore Acres Boulevard this way, and some people just come up Shore Acres Boulevard this way, so they don't see, they might not see those signs. And I also would like to see more communication from the city about the planning and zoning meetings. I have looked on the website, and I don't see any kind of direction about is there any schedule for it or posting of when there, if there's no schedule and they just decide to meet, how is that information distributed and are those open to the public? And so, those are the questions that I have. Also, the sign on Shore Acres Boulevard for, sign for Heron Park, I still haven't seen one. And so, people come into the city looking for Heron Park, and they don't know where it is. So, I'd like to see some kind of sign on Shore Acres Boulevard to direct people down to Heron Park. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. 6.0. Mr. Harrison, would you please give the city manager's report?
Yes, sir, thank you, Jerome. Mayor Pro team. In the 2024 restricted funds and our restricted debt, and this is a financial report, we have $32,461.32 in utility fund, have $102,176,004.7 cents in the road repair to elect the Tex Pool fund, $98,891.51. And that leaves us a total there of $233,529.33. And the unsecured funds, general fund checking was $69,887.81. Utility checking, $68,387.97. And our Tex Pool account, $363,813.3 cents, or a total there of $571,176.62. We will begin to get property taxes in, probably some this month, much more next month, and then we'll have a string of several months where bills will come in. You should see these numbers start to grow.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Harrison, would you please give the monthly police report?
I'm actually going to turn it over to Sergeant Tidwell tonight. He's going to take a turn at this, and you can hear that, so I can quit doing it, maybe.
So, we had one criminal listed for court, that was before the basketball court. One arrest for a western PD, plus the warrant, two accident reports, a child report, and an unattended death and harassment report. We do have an info report, which is, was basically still a matter at the end of the day. But that's it. Any questions?
Counsel?
What did they, did they make a decision what they're going to do about basketball back stuff?
Trying to find a new product to purchase instead of buying that, whatever that, it's not glass, but whatever that was. I'm trying to find temper glass or plexiglass, but I've got to buy something that will fit in that company's, that's proprietary, and they've got a way that they attach it, so we're working on it. Just, that's about, I forget how much that fix was. It was about a $1,000 fix last time. So, I don't want to keep paying $1,000. We're trying to put something out there that's more bearable.
And we fixed it twice so far.
We've only fixed it once, it's been broken twice.
The original.
The original one broke, we put the new one in, and now it's broke. I know it happened in November, but why don't you bring up the date of fraud for us?
So, last week, we got a call for a fraud, it turned out to be a credit card abuse. So, basically, how this is going down is basically the suspect's called our victim, had, disguised her number as Wells Fargo, told them they had some fraudulent stuff on their credit card or debit card, told them to cut it in half, and then someone would be behind it and pick it up. And actually, someone did go by and pick it up. About 10, 20 minutes later, they went to post office, spent about 10 grand there, and then went to Kroger, spent 10 grand there. Unfortunately, they were smart enough to know that they, that there was a certain limit before you had to show your ID, and they knew about that. So, they didn't have to show their ID before getting, I think it was like two grand per money launder. So, at this time, we use flock cameras. So far, we found a last play that kind of fits the timeframe when this person went to go pick it up to when they went to post office. So far, we think that this person, the female, works in the medical field somehow, and that's what we're trying to figure out. There is a male that we do have a picture of, a Kroger. You plainly see the female come out and run underneath the camera perfectly, they'd hand him, swap the card, and he goes in and then purchase some more. So, it looks like we're going to have something going on, hopefully tomorrow. If we don't have anything, then I will reach out to LaPorte PD and see if they can post a photo of the male on their Facebook page. You know, these types of crimes, I mean, I'm kind of happy about this one because we actually have a face. Usually, we don't have one. Usually, it's online or over the phone from some Nigerian or, you know, Iranian guy, so, you know, there's nothing we can do. This one, I think we have something.
There was five welfare concerns, was those?
Yeah, all those five welfare concerns were verified, everything was okay, nothing to really report. Sometimes, it's more like they couldn't get a hold of mama or dad, and they send us out there to make sure they're okay, and we tell you, your son is trying to get a hold of you, who knows about it.
That's good. Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to let counsel know as well as you, Mr. Harrison, which I failed to communicate, I have contacted Commissioner Adrian Garcia, Precinct 2. Two weeks ago, on a Friday night, we had a baby deer hit and killed on Broadway in Fairfield. And I've reached out to him, and we're going to be putting deer signs up on Fairfield, up near Miramar, and Shore Acres Boulevard to try to get people to slow down. So, these little deer, they're running out of places to go, so this was, this was a little deer, so we're working on it, so.
I've seen them several times.
Mr. Harrison, if we could have the public works report, sir?
Okay, you had the public works report. That's good, but is there, we have pictures of the leak that you could put up there to show. I included some pictures of the leak we had a couple of weeks ago just to kind of show you. Sometimes, these pictures are hard to obtain, but these were pretty good. This was the active leak. This is between the houses on Shady Line and Oakdale and the 600 block. You can see that's cast iron pipe from probably 50 years ago, maybe longer. maybe longer, if possible. It seems like it's always right near a joint, which makes it more difficult to repair with the common coupling. So if you go to the next picture, after we was able to take the water pressure down, you see the, you know, that's just a break in it. It's not caused by anything except it's old and corroded. And the new rule for the last several years, if you remember, I stood in here several years ago and said, we're going to quit putting single couplings on these because they break again right next to the other repair. You remember, we had one piece of pipe that was 10 foot long and had 11 repairs on it, represented about $30,000 in repairs for 10 foot. So if you show the next picture, this is what a repair now looks like. So we find the better, we find the good. We dig as far as we can both ways till we find the most solid pipe we can. It's not good, but it's okay. And then we use two couplings, and we put PVC in there. And so far, I mean, knock on wood, we're having really good luck doing this instead of making point repairs or making the individual coupling repaired. And this is, it cost us two clamps, which are expensive. They're a couple of hundred dollars apiece. Still, in the long run, it's a lot cheaper. So we've been real blessed. We haven't had many at all. We've had really good luck, especially in the winter when we have drought type conditions. We start seeing leaks, and we've definitely had drought type conditions the last several months with no rain. But we haven't had any leaks, and I'm thankful for that. Both of our water plants are in service. The lift stations are working like they're supposed to work. Lift station 2 is a pain in the neck. And as we talked about last month, it just, that's the one that gets ragged up. We had to help, they cut it out and unhipped those pumps and lift them up and clean them out and derag them. So we went ahead and I asked them to, I don't know what they have yet, but we're going to clean that lift station out. They'll go down and clean the bottom out. It'll get bogged back up again, but we'll get some months out. We're going to start, we're probably going to try to clean that out twice a year, whether we're having problems or not, just for preventive maintenance. It's in the long run, I hope, it'll be cheaper.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Any further questions? 6.4, emergency medical service.
Windsor has failed to give me a report again this month after I asked for it. The good news is, we're on the agenda at the port tonight for EMS to move to a port. I talked to Corby Alexander, the city manager, on Friday, and I don't think there's going to be any issues there. I text Matt Dahmer as I was walking into the building to see if he would text me and let me know tonight when that passes. So just that we'll know. I have some confidence in that. And if I know it passed tonight, I will let Windsor know in the morning that their 90 days have started because I have full confidence this council's going to pass it in December. I have no doubt, if I had any doubt, I wouldn't do that. But I have no doubt that's what's going to happen.
Okay. Thank you. 7.1, can I have a motion from someone to approve the minutes from September 9th and October 14th?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. City council, is there anyone that has any corrections on the minutes from the 9th of September or the 14th of October? Hearing none, that they will stay as posted? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Does anyone see a reason for a second meeting? And let me say to all of y'all, happy Thanksgiving ahead of time.